Ready in the back? I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Board of Education for the School District of Waukesha. Wednesday, January 10th, it's our full board meeting. Welcome, everybody, to our meeting tonight. Why don't we start off by saying the Pledge of Allegiance? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brzink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here.
And Sue, will you please verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you kindly. Happy New Year to everyone. I hope the first 10 days have gone well for everyone. Everyone's back in school, hitting it hard again. We'll be hearing from a couple of our students a little bit later. We do not have bright lights tonight, but we do have a recognition. And our Chris Hetstrom will introduce our recipient.
Good evening, everybody. Okay. The Employee Recognition Award for January is being presented this evening to Robert Griesar. Rob, would you please join me? Rob has been working as a middle school teacher with the School District of Waukesha since 2001. He is at Les Paul Middle School, teaching math and social studies in the Compass Program. Rob's nominators begin by saying that teachers, in their nature, are caring people who look to challenge students' growth in their learning. And Rob Griesar exceeds this definition. Rob raises the bar when it comes to defining what it means to be a teacher in the School District of Waukesha. In his classroom, Mr. Griesar stretches himself and his skills to meet the demands of students in the Compass Program. He modeled a growth mindset before growth mindset was the buzz. This continues in his efforts to build community within the school. What is great about this is that he does not plan to do this. It just happens. People are drawn to Rob because he is a genuine, humble, and kind person. Your best interest is always on his mind, even if he has met you only once. He makes certain that no matter a student's socioeconomic status, family situation, learning need, or behavioral concern, all students are able to take part in the activities available. This is modeled by Rob and has become the norm at Les Paul Middle School. In his 16 years with the district, Rob Griesar has given back to the Les Paul Middle School community in ways that show growth in a department and a culture. The Compass Personalized Learning Program, in which Rob teaches, is a setting that not only challenges students, but the teachers as well. Rob acts as an academic coach to his students and meets the needs of 6th grade through 8th grade students by offering lessons at their various learning levels in math. This year alone, he is instructing students from elementary through algebra, a high school-level course. Additionally, Rob has helped to establish the culture that exists in the historic buildings of Les Paul Middle School. While staff members and students may change, Rob Griesar continues to demonstrate his level of kindness and compassion to all Les Paul staff, students, and families. On behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate Robert Griesar on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.
Are you going to take care of me when Pat's gone? Are you going to take care of me when Pat's gone?
It truly is a great recognition to be a part of the School District of Waukesha. Without the staff members and the people that I work with, I wouldn't be who I am. I just love working with kids, working with the families. Besides teaching, I also coach three traveling sports within the district for the middle school level for the last 17 years. So this is, you know, I really just love working with kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Yes. Moving on, we're going to hear from our student representatives tonight. We have Brianna and Mariah from the E-Achieve Academy. Ladies, would you please introduce yourself and give us your report?
They were prepared to introduce themselves, but then I told them, "Well, I'll introduce you," and let them take it over from there. So, this is Maya Childers and Brianna Jones. And they're both seniors at E-Achieve. They've both been with E-Achieve. This is their fourth year with E-Achieve, so they've spent their whole high school career here at E-Achieve. And they are our co-presidents of our Student Council. And with that, I'll let them share what they brought to share.
All right. Well, thank you for that nice introduction. So, like you said, we're the co-presidents of Student Council. So, kind of what we do as the co-presidents is we create meeting agendas. We really act as like the facilitators. So, we run online meetings through the program Zoom. And we just kind of act like the facilitators and kind of make sure everything's running smoothly and people are participating. We help make sure all students are included in our meetings and things like that. Really, I think what our goal for Student Council, kind of what we do on Student Council, is really trying to make sure that we have a better sense of community in our school. So, as an online school, saying we don't see our classmates every single day. So, that's something that we really find our students really long for, is that better sense of community. And we do that through different projects. So, for example, we do outings. So, something, some of the outings we've done so far this year are a Milwaukee Boat Tour outing on Michigan Lake, which was really fun. We had a lot, a big turnout for that. And then we also had our annual Devil's Lake hike, which is always really fun for a lot of the students and families. Coming up in May, we'll be having our prom for the high school students in the Kalahari and the Dells, which I've been going for four years, which is, or three years, almost four years. So, it's a lot of fun. Something new that where Student Council is planning this year for E-Achieve is a Spirit Week to celebrate National School Choice Week in the end of January. So, how we're going to do that in an online setting is we're going to have, encourage all students and teachers to participate in that and then post their pictures of them in their outfits and stuff online on the E-Achieve social media pages. And that way, that's where everyone can see what each other are wearing and stuff. So, examples of our daily themes are Career Day, Decade Day, Color Day, Superhero Day, and Spirit Day. And then finally, we also have our yearbook, which is, this is going to be our fourth year doing a yearbook. The Student Council organizing a yearbook committee to do that. So, just right now, we're just starting to work on collecting pictures for that and getting a yearbook committee formed. And by the end of the year, we'll have both a virtual copy for students, a PDF version, and both, and then also a tangible softcover copy that we mail out to students.
Coming up, we have two more field trips that we plan this year to keep everyone together and connected and feel like they have a way where they can socialize with the students that they see their names on the computer, but then they can still see them in person. On January 27th, we are going to the EAA Museum, the Air and Space Museum in Oshkosh. And then, in the spring, we're going to the Packers Stadium. And I know a lot of our students are excited to do that. I mean, I've never been, but I'm excited to go. And then, this is actually with an online school, we have one semester, like, we have one semester deadline. This is our last week before finals. So, all of us are working hard to turn in all of our assignments and get them in before midnight on Friday. The pacing at this school has been really helpful, I know, for my family and Brianna and all the students that are here. It gives another way for them to feel like they have their own planning and their own way and schedule, especially with students that live in areas where the schooling isn't as, like, their education isn't the way that they want it to be or any other way. That really helps. And the flexibility, I know, is really helpful for my life. E-Achieve, I, like, it just has been so great. I don't know how it would have been. I went to regular school until I was in high school, and the switch was so easy. I didn't feel like I was left out. The teachers always kept me involved, and they always were emailing me and the e-sessions. I mean, I met Brianna, met Brianna on the computer when, our freshman year. And we've just been able to grow and get to know each other through that. And I just think it's a really good experience.
Yeah. And for me, my experience in E-Achieve, I really, the flexibility is a big part for me. I am really involved in 4H. So, I do a lot of leadership opportunities through that, where I do a lot of traveling around the country and different trips and stuff. So, that gives me the opportunity to go on those trips while, instead of having to be at school and things like that in a face-to-face setting. I'm also, I also have animals on like my own little hobby farm in my house. And just last week, I had lambs, baby lambs born. So, it takes, that takes up a lot of my time, being able to care for them and being able to be at home to watch for them and care for them is really important for me. So, I really appreciate all E-Achieve's done for me and having that flexibility to let me do things I love every day. So, that's what we got for you guys. Thank you for having us come and speak to you. It was really a big honor. Did you guys have any questions for Maya and I?
Mr. Baumgart?
Yes, thank you. And particularly, I want to thank you for giving us some insight as to how you have appreciated E-Achieve, because that's important to us as board members to know that it's been of value to some of our students. Would you mind sharing with us what your plans? First of all, I guess, where you're from geographically in Wisconsin, and then what your plans are for next year?
I live in Racine County. And we live, we also live on a farm, my family. And I have four younger siblings. And the high school where I was, like, would have had to have gone was an hour-and-a-half bus ride. And that just wasn't something that I wanted to do. So, we found E-Achieve. And then, next year, I am going to UW-Green Bay. And I am doing human biology with a health science emphasis.
Thank you.
So, I live in Big Bend, which is just south here in Waukesha County. My plans, I don't know exactly what college yet, but somewhere nearby here, places I've been looking at are Carroll University in Waukesha, and then also UW-Parkside in Kenosha. And I'm planning on majoring in marketing.
Thank you.
Questions?
Mr. O'Brien?
You know, every year, I try to make sure I get to E-Achieve graduation. I guess, five of us that were here when we started E-Achieve. And I have the chance to meeting a lot of the graduates, obviously, that go through. And it's, it is a tremendously good cross-section of kids that if it wasn't for E-Achieve, I wonder what type of environment they would have been otherwise. And we hear, one of the main things that we hear is that the depth of what we offer through E-Achieve quite often exceeds what they could get from their local school districts, especially the more rural ones, where they don't have as much scope as we have here in Waukesha. Is that kind of your feedback? And I, have you been able to kind of hear what others have had to say that aren't in E-Achieve? Are they kind of like a little bit jealous of your schedule, especially being in 4H and stuff like that?
Yeah. A lot of my friends always, I'll, like, through social media, like, on Snapchat and things, my friends always find it funny how, like, I can Snapchat me with my lambs or whatever at, like, 10 o'clock, and they're, like, at school. And they're like, "Oh, my gosh, you're so lucky." Or I always tell them, "I can just sit at home and do school in pajamas." So, people are always really jealous of me. And they really like, and a lot of, I've actually gotten a couple of friends of mine to join E-Achieve and by telling them about it. And they really enjoy their experience there.
So, we are looking for help with marketing?
I know. For me, I have done 17 musicals since I was eight years old. And in my musical theater group, we used to be mostly homeschoolers doing it. And I was the only one, one of the only people that did regular school. But now, they all decided to start regular school in high school, and I was the one that was switching. And it just has been so helpful during tech weeks and rehearsals, where I can just bring my school even with me and just do it there. And they're all stressing out. I mean, it's five hours every day for an entire week. And then you have seven performances on the weekend. And they're always flooding and tests and trying to make up their things. And I just can, I can work ahead and get it done, or I can always finish it the week after. So, that has been so helpful.
So, have you questioned their insanity that they didn't choose to go to E-Achieve, Rob?
Yeah. I'm always telling them, like, "See, this is why. You should have listened to me." And when I was a freshman, when I was telling, everyone's like, "No, that's not going to work. I don't know."
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Brzink?
Yes. What kind of skills do you think a student needs to have to be successful at your school? Because obviously, you two have lots of wonderful skills. But what about other students? What do you think they need to have to be successful?
One, one, one big one I think of is organization. Because you really got to keep, you're really self-teaching, like, self-leading yourself here. So, you really have to keep yourself on task. And you have to make sure you stay on pace with what they give you. Obviously, you have the option to fall behind or get ahead. But keeping on track of yourself, not getting, you're in a setting at home, I find really difficult for me sometimes, because you have the TV, you have the cellphone. So, being, having that self-discipline to sit down at the computer is a big one.
Very good.
I think that it really, you have to be motivated. If you're not motivated to turn in your work, you're not going to do it. And also, making sure that the parents or the guardians in the home are really supportive and making sure that they're not just going to let them do their own thing and not keep on track. Because I have young, my younger sister, she's in 6th grade, and she does E-Achieve. And I know my parents have to really make sure that each week and each day, they're like, "Did you turn in your assignments?" Because she doesn't want to go on the computer and always have to turn in those harder things or do the, go to the e-sessions. But as long as you have support and the student is self-motivated, they're going to have a great.
Well, I'm sure that your principal's proud of you. Your teachers are very proud of you. And we, as the school board, are very proud of what you're accomplishing. Thank you so much for sharing that. It really, really was enlightening to me, anyway.
Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. Mariah, you mentioned your younger sister being in 6th grade at E-Achieve. Any of the other siblings in E-Achieve, too?
Yes. I have another sister, and she is a sophomore at E-Achieve. She started when I started. And then my other sister, she did regular home. We all started off in the public school system. I mean, E-Achieve's a public school, but in the face-to-face school. But then, when I transitioned, we all decided to transition to either homeschooling or online schooling. So, the two of us have been doing it for, this is our fourth year. And then, Ally, the 6th grader, this is her first year. And then, my two younger brothers, they're only five, and they're twins. So, we just, they could definitely need to go into a classroom and have that discipline, I know, in our house.
Says your mother.
It's good to have a break from them during the day, but...
And I'm sure your mom appreciates you just being home, helping out on the farm to just...
Yeah. She's a stay-at-home mom, and she's very, like, focused on her children. My dad is a firefighter and paramedic. And then he is a teacher at MATC. So, he's gone a lot of the time. He has to sleep at the fire station. And just us being able to be home and during, especially during the school day, I can drive my brother to school and come home or just help out in the family. I know this has been a really big help.
And how often are you guys able, I know with Racine and Big Bend, you could probably take the backroads. How often do you get together to talk about either the Student Council or just to hang out?
Most of our meetings for Student Council right now are done online, since a lot of our students are all over the state. So, it's kind of hard for us to actually meet each other face-to-face. But those are ways we've been talking about recently and trying to figure out more ways to do that. But, yeah, we have some people on Student Council that live all the way up in, like, the Green Bay area, Appleton area. I have someone who lives up in the superior area. So, they're everywhere, I think.
And we don't see each other that often just because I know both of us have super-busy schedules.
Yes.
But when we do, like, we see each other, I know we took the ACT.
Yes.
We both took it here. And it's just really great to put a face to a name and to know that you're in it together, and you can both get through it. And just graduating, when you know someone, it just, you seem, it seems like that wouldn't happen at an online school, that you're just your own, in your own world. But there are people that are your same age and your same personality and have the same interests as you that are going through it. And you can talk to them and get to know more.
And I just have to brag a little bit about Brianna, because every time I go to your house, I am so jealous of your hobby farm. And Brianna wins every award in 4H. And she's a great speaker. And, yeah, and you guys got one of our turkeys this year.
I did.
Did you have it for Thanksgiving?
I do, we have, yeah, it was for Thanksgiving.
Oh, good.
It was amazing.
Oh, good.
It was amazing.
So, yeah, she makes wedding cakes that are like, oh, she wins all the grand champions on everything she does. And now I know how you have so much time to get that done.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly why.
I didn't know you were in E-Achieve, but I'm so glad you guys are happy. And just keep up with the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dietz?
From all your positive experiences you've had with E-Achieve, do you have any suggestions for improvement?
I think one really big thing is maybe having some sort of, I know a lot of students really like the flexibility that it gives with having the one deadline. But maybe having, for some students, they can, like, pick another route if they know that they're a little bit less self-motivated, that they, their teachers will say, "You have to turn in your assignment at least once a month or by this time." Just for the ones that really get behind, because I can't imagine, I know I'm self-motivated, and I can't imagine if I wasn't, I probably have, like, 200 assignments in the last week. So, maybe just thinking about having, where some students have that option for the ones that need a little bit more.
And that's what I would think, too. Maybe, I think it would even help me, too, if we had just, not a lot more deadlines, just a little more deadlines. So, instead of just the one. But another one I can think of is maybe more opportunities for kids to maybe, like, meet up and do some sort of class together for those that can come together in this area. Maybe have, maybe a class will want to have some sort of outing or project, and they can organize that. And so, get more opportunities for people to meet each other.
Great. Thank you very much.
Well, actually, I think that has grown over the years. When we first started E-Achieve, Rick, wasn't there, like, one outing? Maybe, maybe one?
So, yeah, Student Council's done an excellent job of really offering more outings for...
Any other questions? I mean, your energy level, ladies, is just spectacular. And I'll tell you, the flexibility, I could tell why you'd be passionate about that. But along with that comes the self-discipline that you talked about and the motivation. I think that's going to serve both of you very well, no matter what you choose to do in higher education. We look forward to your next report three, four months from now. Thank you for that. Great job.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
We're now at the section of our meeting where there's an opportunity for our citizens to address the Board of Education. As has been past practice, we limit this time to three minutes per speaker. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Barb Brzink will give a signal. And we'd like you to wrap up in the final 30 seconds. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner, and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited, prohibited from speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers, please silence your phones at this time. We do have one person signed up, and that's Mr. Paul Reese. Welcome, Paul.
Good evening. I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and a pleasant New Year. I came Monday to the FNF meeting and to thank everyone. I got my tax bill. And the reason I came was to thank everybody, because mine went down, and it could be a lot worse. I could live in West Ellis. So, I really came to thank you guys for holding the line there. And, you know, with steady, you know, enrollment, it was a good thing to see. I also stayed afterward because this school board is looking into passing a referendum on building a new school. And I would just gather that it's going to be something for STEM. And I, in a district that has no growing enrollment, I do have a hard time with that. And we talk about Butler being full. But there's ways to get around that. I went to North, and I walked to North. Now, my kids who live next door to where I live, where I walked to North, are bussed to West because we had to spread out enrollment. I said, "So, to hear somebody say that, 'Well, Butler's really packed,' well, there's ways to get around that, and that's through spreading out enrollment." And Mr. O'Brien brought up something that I was sitting back there burning about, and that's Waukesha West, when that was built. And, because it is the Taj Mahal of schools, and it is the newest school we have and the most expensive school to maintain. And there's no excuse for that. And then there was Waukesha North and the boggles that went on with that. We have probably the only meter pool in the state of Wisconsin. And that's just, I don't know how the board was sold on that, but it was. And those are things that I, that really bothered me, and I saw pulled over on the school board. And I, you know, I went to North. I knew about that pool, that it was useless, you know, to hold meets and tournaments and your records and everything else that are kept there. No windows, the way they set it up. They wanted to have open classrooms. But the problem was, if your physics teacher's here and your Spanish teacher's two feet behind you, it made it real confusing. And that's why they put up all the borders. So, it's confounded ideas that came out of this board, and it were sold on.
Three seconds.
I am worried about when I hear some of the things being brought up at that meeting where, "What do we want? These are dream things we want," you know. I'm really hesitant on this. So, anyways, I thought I'd bring it up. So, thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to our minute approval. We do have four minutes to approve here. December 13th, our regular Board of Education meeting minutes. December 13th, we had an executive session. December 20th, we had an executive session for an expulsion panel. And December 29th, we had a special Board of Education meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Moved by Barb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Baumgart. Any discussion, changes? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.[1607.85]
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. It passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications report given by Dr. Gray.
Nothing this evening. No correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brzink, do you have a Waukesha Education Foundation report?
I do. Is this it? Oh, this is it. Sorry about that. Yes, I do. At the December Waukesha Education Foundation Board meeting, we recognized and thanked outgoing board members Crystal Knitzer, Diane Voight, and Kathy Gardner for their contributions and dedication to the foundation. They will be greatly missed. At the same meeting, we welcomed new board member Dennis Griffin, principal of Prairie Elementary. We're excited to have him on the board. The celebration of excellence scheduled for next month has been postponed. The reason for the postponement was to avoid a duplication of activities from the 4K-12 Fund and Free Family Grant and enrollment opportunity last month at North High School. The Federation is working on alternative ways to celebrate our Waukesha Education Foundation grant recipients. We are excited to announce that the board has approved funding to hire a part-time executive director to help lead the foundation as we enter a new era of growth. The search to hire for this position has begun, and we hope to have it filled by the end of March. Lastly, the Federation is extremely grateful for the school district's Casual Day campaign. Money raised from this initiative is donated to the foundation. These funds are then returned directly to the classroom in the form of foundation grants. This year, the total amount raised was $12,878. Thank you to everyone in the district who participates in the Casual Day program. We greatly appreciate. This concludes my report.
And a big thanks to Sue Endur on that. She coordinates that, and I think those little video snippets, those emojis or whatever, those moving things are what motivate people. Thank you, Sue. Thank you for the report, Mrs. Brzink. Moving on to our safety committee report given by Amanda Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the Safety Committee met this morning at the facilities building. It was a very brief meeting. We reviewed the accident reports for both staff and students, and that concluded our morning. The next meeting will be next month, February 14th, at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you. Moving on to our charter school and program report given by Mr. Baumgart.
It's also going to be short, what we're doing here tonight.
Everyone enjoys the holidays, I think.
I think that's part of it. Just a couple items. One, reporting from Butler, who raised just, the students who raised just under $900 to donate to the Blair Elementary School for hats and mittens for those who do not have hats and mittens of their own. As a way of showing gratitude, all Butler students received a personal message, I'm going to emphasize something, all Butler students received a personal message from one of the Butler staff, showing something about, something positive about the kid. So, there's a little bit more behind that, I'm going to come back to that. Also, all Butler staff members then, this was not planned by the staff, received messages back from the parents and the kids about something that staff member did over the course of the year. And when you think about this, this is about, and Barb says this often, relationship building, and it's really going on positive there. The positive part that Jason shared with me previously, they've been doing this for a couple of years now, and it's always, my question of him was, you know, there's kids out there, it's hard to find something positive about them, you know, let's be honest, but there's some issues sometimes. He says, "No," he says, "we always tried, and if, and if the staff couldn't come up with anything positive, I had to write that letter." The point I'm going to make here is, he's down to writing only a few letters. He says, "I used to have to write a lot of letters." Now, he's just writing a few. So, the culture at Butler is, and if you've seen it, if you've been paying attention, it's changing beautifully. So, I wanted to emphasize that a little bit more than Jason's notes to me. I also want to point out that there were other fundraisers at other schools during the course of the holiday season, showing that our kids have joined to share the holiday spirit to help others in need, and it's going on well in many other schools. The only other thing I wanted to mention here was, if you haven't note, to the board members particularly, maybe online or on the air, if you haven't noticed it yet, the website now is up for the information on our upcoming focus groups. It's up there right now. You'll see it kind of in those ones that pass by, right before the one where there's two students trying to teach an old dog new tricks. "It worked too, I learned a new trick." And right behind that, you'll see what happened to Jason Sadowski after that, after that fundraising, because he got slimed big time. It's all a little fun during the course of the season, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our next item, we, every year, there's state by state statute, we have to approve an open enrollment space availability report, and we have that for the 2018-2019 school year. Dr. Cook, would you mind taking us through the report?
Sure.
And summarizing what that looks like for this upcoming year?
Yeah, so annually, the board at the January meeting does have to approve seats. In front of you, you have an executive summary that outlines what our space projections are. The, after the executive summary page, you'll see the enrollment projections for the 2018-19 school year from grades K-4 through 12th grade. On this chart, you'll see anywhere from zero seat capacity all the way up to what looks like high numbers. You'll see in 4th grade, for instance, where it is 105 open seats. When you think about that, though, that is 105 seats across 24, I'm sorry, across 39 sections of school, so that would come down to about three kids per classroom. At most of our schools, there is not enough, there's not enough space available in a classroom to condense sections, so that's why you see a higher number. It doesn't mean that we will get 105, and it doesn't mean that we would staff to that full capacity as the year goes on. These are numbers that we monitor very closely over the summer. For all grades, there's a waiting list where you see a zero, a waiting list will be generated. That waiting list will be generated randomly, and so that if there is space available as the school year goes on and as the summer goes on, we would be accepting kids in those seats. If you look at the second page then, you'll see the special education programs, and I'll just refer to the last column on there, open seat capacity minus enrollment. We have closed the district in all areas for students with disabilities due to what our current enrollment is. I put a brief table on the first page in the executive summary for you to review. All students who apply to the district who have a disability will be put on a waiting list, and then again, if space was available through the open enrollment period, and then again, through the summer, we would accept students off a waiting list into our, into our schools.
This is an action item, I would be looking for a motion to accept the report. Mr. O'Brien?
I move to accept the report.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Mr. O'Brien?
We did have this discussed at FNF, it isn't in my report, but just to be clear, it's not that we couldn't have more kids in the district if we were staff for it. It really reflects our staffing, and it reflects the ratio of special needs students, which is actually a much higher rate than what we've had in the past. So, it definitely shows that special needs opportunities are basically not there, based on our staffing levels and based on prior practice in the, in the district. So, if we did have another thousand kids enrolled, we'd find room for them, yeah.
Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. And I am going to ask, or I'm going to call Stephanie tomorrow and talk about a specific case, but just in case the family that asked me about this is watching. When 4K, let's say someone has a child that wants to be enrolled in 4K, but that, the closest school to them is full, they are put on a waiting list, they're wondering, do, and I said no to this, do outside of our district kids, are they allowed to just come in? Okay, so if they didn't sign up on the deadline, let's say they weren't one of the first, and it got full, now they're in, on a waitlist, do, does someone from the outside of the district, do they have priority over them when they, you know, they're like, "I pay taxes, it's the school across the street, and we can't get in, we're on a waitlist." But they were thinking that it was someone from outside the district, or someone that's not in that, that school, what is it called?
Attendance area.
Attendance area, thank you. And I said, "You know what? Because it's so popular, I'm sure a lot of people that are in that attendance area have already taken up those spots." And then I thought, before I give them, put them into panic for our conversation from the FNF, that there needs to be 30 in order to hire another teacher. Can you explain how it, who gets first pick on that, and then how you guys determine who gets picked on the waitlist?
So, an attendance area student would get first choice. So, if you are in the Hawthorne attendance area, you live in the Hawthorne attendance area, and all of those students would be priority into that section. If a family were choicing in there, then if there was space, they would, then would get access. If there was no space, they would be put into a lottery, and again, they'd get a random number through the lottery, and if there were space available, then they would get a phone call, and you can bring your child to Hawthorne as your 4K site. As far as out of district goes, and this question does come up around the 4K level, if a student from a district that does not offer four-year-old kindergarten tries to open and enroll into our district, that student can be denied because their district doesn't offer the program, and that's often what happens by the, by the resident district. So, school district A, not the Waukesha School District, has a student who tries to get into our 4K program through open enrollment. That school district A would often deny that request because they don't offer the program in their schools. So, open enrollment at 4K would only be in a situation where another school district had a 4K program and the kid tried to come here. Those students, the seats available in those schools would be Waukesha priority first, because that's how we would be setting our space. Again, if there's anybody who has questions on this, they can contact Stephanie in enrollment, or they can contact me, and I'd be happy to explain how the lottery process works when we do the drawing. It is an open meeting when we do the drawing, so people can come in and observe it, and that's where those seats then get teased out. But oftentimes, oftentimes, in all situations, resident, or attendance area students get priority in an attendance area school.
Okay, one more question. Let's say someone's number four on the waitlist, it's their, their school, their attendance area school, but someone is in spot number two, and that they're out of that attendance area. Who gets, who gets first priority?
The, the, nobody jumps anybody on a, on a waitlist. So, for some reason, an attendance area student were placed on a waitlist in a lottery setting, they then would be in that. We do not jump kids, that would create all sorts of phone calls for you as a board, and all sorts of phone calls for me. That waitlist is the waitlist, and we stick to that as a priority.
Mr. O'Brien?
I'm just a little confused by that answer. I think, just clarify for me, if you have a waitlist, the waitlist is prioritized for, based on whether they're in the attendance area, whether they're a school district resident, and then out of school district residents that are allowed to choice in. Is that the priority?
The priority is anybody who's in the attendance area who fits into the original seat allocation. Those are the kids that are there first, and we have a defined window for that enrollment. We do occasionally, in some of our attendance areas, we do get people who wait to try to enroll until the last week of August, and those are students then, that if those programs are full, and there's no space there, those kids would then be placed in an order on a lottery drawing, because again, we have to do our staffing. If we're in a situation where we had 18 kids show up into an attendance area, we would be then looking at what staff we would need to add in order to accommodate that. But, but we do have to give, we do have to prioritize those individuals who come into those attendance areas and apply for that school placement during the enrollment windows that we have established. That begins December 1st, goes to January 30th, that's the first window for staff, for people to come in. The lotteries are held at the end of January, I believe, early February. That's then where that second priority group would be, would be generated. And then we do have, we do have circumstances where people come very late, and then they, they may not get a seat at their Waukesha school, but again, we do have, I believe it's a dozen community partner 4K sites where people are able to access spread out across the community. So, it's not that there's not a 4K seat available, it just might not be at the Waukesha public location, but we do have our satellite programs in the community where kids can get into because there is space. So, nobody has denied a seat in 4K, it just may not be at the school of choice based off of one that application came in.
Mrs. Reinacek?
But they're already on a waitlist, and we haven't even closed that window yet, and the, the school is actually like right across the street. So, if the window isn't even closed and they're on a waitlist, that shows the popularity of that program, what do you do now?
That would be where we would attend, we would entertain additional sections. If there was, if, like I said, if there were 18, 20 kids that showed up, we would be looking at that under additional teachers if there was space available in that school. By putting 4K in some of our, our elementary locations, we have maximized the number of classrooms that could be used at some of those schools. So, therefore, again, there is a space issue in that 4K at that elementary school, and that's why we encourage families, we do a lot of media, to try to get people in as soon as possible, and that's why we run a two-month window in December and January to try to get people in. There are some circumstances where people don't get their materials in, for whatever reason, they don't feel their child is ready for school at that level, they may be new to the community, they may not have, have enrolled in that time. There's, there's a lot of reasons, but we do have to have a process that honors a commitment to staffing, which is what we want to be able to do, which has budget implications. We want to make sure then that we provide opportunity for others to get in, but that has to be done through the waitlist.
And last question, and what month do you determine whether you're going to hire another teacher and have another section or not?
Between Stephanie Peterson, Chris Hedstrom, and I, we monitor that enrollment and those priorities on a month-by-month basis. So, if we get those pressure points where we have a lot of kids in one location that can't be spread anywhere else, we would then be, that, that decision could happen March, April, May, June. We've, we've even looked at, do we need to do something as late as August, right before the beginning of the school? So, it is constantly monitored.
Thank you.
And the process must be working fairly well, otherwise we would be getting calls and emails. And I think once we make a commitment, so let's say you're in that first window, the December-January, and if you're a family and you were saying you got in, you don't want to be bumped in August, you know, that would definitely, we'd definitely get a call on, on something like that.
And we do not do the bumping. If you are in, you're in, you don't get bumped from your seat.
Right.
You would have to opt out of that school.
Gotcha. Mr. O'Brien?
You know, traditionally, enrollment has always been one of the few things that HR had added to their plate to make them, and it's a very important part of our school district. I really think the enrollment discussion, like some of the points Ms. Reinacek brought up, is something that would be nice to be assigned to a committee, whether it be HR or somebody, to go over and understand better how the 4K program is structured, allocated, and enrollment is managed in that program. If we have a waiting list and it involves, you know, in-district residents, it'd be interesting to know more about that and have it more studied at the committee level.
Yeah. At the end of this meeting, we always allow suggestions for things to be agendized, but you're the first one who'll make that recommendation to me.
Well, we're in the middle of a motion, so I can bring it up.
I know, I'm just, I'm having a little fun, Mr. O'Brien. And I do think that that probably would, would be either HR, or maybe it's, maybe it's the teaching and learning?
Yep, depending on what the, what the focus is. It's typically not staffing, because when we have the, when the kids show up, we, we staff, you know, as needed, so I don't see that really necessarily being an HR function, but I, since it's programming, it probably would fall under, you know. Or if there's a financial issue, a big financial issue, then it could be FNF, but.
Mr. O'Brien?
Well, past practice, enrollment issues have always been handled by HR. I mean, that's been the past practice, that's why we have, redistricting used to go through HR, it's one of those things that nobody wants to do, and, yeah, so we put it on HR, yeah. Anyway, my preference is, it's a little different than teaching and learning, where you're talking about a whole different type of animal.
Okay. Well, we'll take that into consideration. Other discussion on this motion? To approve our open enrollment report for the 2018-2019 school year. Okay, Sue, take the roll call vote.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to the consent agenda. Darren, do we have any public gifts to report on?
Yes, we do. Les Paul Middle School received $788 from the class of 1952 to purchase benches in front of the school. Waukesha South High School received two gifts, 2003 Chevrolet Blazer with an estimated value of $1,000 from James Kilso, which will be used in the automotive classes, and $500 from Northwestern Mutual Foundation to be used for classroom needs in the Waukesha Engineering Preparatory Academy. Waukesha West received $1,000 from Mr. and Mrs. Elin Golden to be used to help with West Woods projects. And the last gift, the Charles Horowitz Planetarium received $1,000 from Marge Holzberg to purchase program supplies for the planetarium.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Our community continues to be generous, and we thank them for, for their donations to our schools.
Mr. Como?
Yes?
We did miss one donation, I'd like to bring, hold on.
What is that?
One of our community members donated a significant amount of their time and received the Wisconsin Direct Athletic Directors Association Service Award this year, Heidi Bauer. So, I think we should recognize people who donate a tremendous amount of their time and service and receive a statewide award like that, so.
Yes, congratulations, thank you. Thank you, Heather, yes. Thank you for that addition, Kurt, yes. Gifts are given in terms of money and items, but time is probably just as precious, if not more precious. Thank you for that. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside, you'll have an opportunity for that in a moment. Included in the items for approval are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on December 20th, 2017. A confidential communication regarding the details of expulsions was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes included under item 1G. If any board member wishes to discuss this item, we do have an executive session planned for after the meeting if, if necessary. Approval of the consent agenda confirms full board agreement with the expulsion panel action. Does any board member want to have an item set aside at this time for separate consideration? Does any board member want to have an item set aside at this time for separate consideration? Okay, seeing none. Pat Madden, will you please, uh, present the consent agenda for approval?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of three retirements, three teacher contracts, and one teacher contract modification. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended twice.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. McCaffrey, discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero. And Sue, please, please.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Sue, please make sure we have the addition to the, the minutes. That was, was noted in the gifts. Moving on to the superintendent's report given by Dr. Gray.
Uh, reminder, next week is our, uh, Wisconsin State Educational Conference in Milwaukee. Um, I know a number of board members have signed up, but if you haven't and you still would like to, please contact Sue. She has the hotline right to Wasby and can sign you up immediately, so we're good there. And then after that, next week, we have the Waukesha One Conference at West on, on January twenty-second. And as always, board members are invited to attend and participate if they would like to do that. And that's usually, uh, there's a lot of learning going on, but it's also a very, uh, fun day for staff as well. So hopefully, hope to see you there. And, and this Saturday, Hadfield is celebrating its hundred and thirty-fifth year anniversary. Uh, they have an event on Saturday from twelve to two PM, if you're interested in attending. And finally, a little, little bit of information. Uh, today I received the, uh, the most recent edition of the School Fact Seventeen. It's a Wisconsin Tax Parallel publication. And I've been relying on this particular publication since nineteen eighty-nine. I think it's the, by far, the most accurate and consistent, uh, data. It, uh, uh, it, it, over the years, DPI has changed their formulas and calculations a bit. Uh, the Wisconsin Tax Parole Alliance has not. So it's been good to consistently use for comparisons with other districts, as well as comparing trends. And you can see here the information, uh, I, I did, uh, many of the area, uh, K-12 districts, and I also compared to, um, the, the top ten largest districts in the state, so.
And how did we do?
Oh, well, uh, it, it depends if you're, if you're looking for first place. First place or last place, um, when it comes to spending per pupil, we're, we're, we're pretty low. Not as low as.
Last place is good in this case.
Well, possibly. It would, it would be nice to have a few more dollars to work with.
Okay.
But, um, we're, we're, uh, we're had, slightly, just slightly had a McGowan ago, and the only thing I can guess is the, you know, in prior years, the business manager there was kind of stingy about spending money, so. Uh, I, I don't know if, if they'll catch us or not. But, uh, in, in terms of tax rate, uh, we're, we're looking very, very good. By far and away, the lowest, um, uh, among both the area county s- school districts, as well as the top ten largest districts. And, um, you can kind of see the, the, some of the disparity in the spending. Uh, you, some people have argued, well, bigger districts typically, uh, uh, could, you know, could spread their administrative costs out over more kids and so on. But, uh, if you look at the top ten expenditure levels, that, that doesn't really hold water as well, so. And, and we're, we're probably, um, from, when you look at Appleton on down, we're probably far more urban than these other districts are as well. So we've got some other challenges, and I think when you compare our, our, uh, school achievement to the top ten, we look very good. We're usually typically up in the top two or three year after year, and that trend is heading, heading up as well. So that's just a little bit of information, uh, that I thought you might find interesting. I, I think our, our tax rate yet went down another couple cents this last year, so. Yeah, that's a good one to be in last place on, I guess. So, and that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gray. Moving on to our, uh, committee, uh, reports. We're going to start off this month, uh, with our policy committee, given by Chairman Baumgart.
Thank you. Policy committee does have one action item and seven discussion items this evening. Uh, the action item, uh, we had a first reading last month on this one, is the deletion of policy twenty-three seventy, educational options and new policy, and establishing a new policy eighty-one forty-six, notification of educational options. Policy twenty-three seventy is about the various educational options that exist. Independent study correspondence courses, GED, HSE, and so on, that the district has been making available to students outside of the standard courses offered by our teachers. This policy was previously, previously and sensibly placed in the section on Curriculum Two Thousand Programs. As typical curriculum options expanded to include a wide variety of options beyond standard courses offered by teachers, these options were encompassed by the standard meaning of curriculum and are often contained with curriculum materials and course selection guides. Meanwhile, the state passed a law and then revised the law to require districts to provide notification to the community of all the educational options available to a district, to the district students. As the policy was revised by law and subsequently revised again, the policy became more about the notification requirements for a district and less about the original concept of the district's own educational offerings. As such, the reshaped policy has been whittled down to the notification requirement only. Moved to section, operation section eight thousand of the policy manual, where such legal procedures are located as standard operating procedures required by the state law, by law. And if you recall this from our reading last month, we've deleted the entire policy and the lengthy policy of all of the things that were available to our students, and ended up with a new policy which simply says to the people, you can find it online. So it's, it makes sense. Otherwise, you'd be changing this thing every couple months. So, uh, with that, I move for approval of the deletion of policy twenty-three seventy and the installing policy eighty-one forty-six in its place.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Brzink, discussion? I don't know if we've ever done so much illumination. Kind of, you know, swapping out and got down to one sentence.
This is probably the only policy we've ever eliminated.
Either we get rid of it completely, or, yeah.
But it's a good move.
Yeah. It makes sense. Definitely makes sense. Any other discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Bill?
Okay, now I have, as I said, seven discussion items, policies, which I'll be giving you the first reading on, hopefully bringing them back in February for approval. Uh, the first policy is fifty-one thirty, and, and by the way, a lot of these are, again, meeting compliance issues, so not a lot of discussion. Fifty-one thirty withdrawal dropout establishes some language that we need to be following. Actually, Waukesha is already following it, so we're in pretty good shape there. A reference to compulsory attendance requirements has been added to the withdrawal dropout from school policy. In addition, an option has been provided for districts at which to establish protocols for removing students from the YZ data system when they have simply lost contact and disappeared from the district. While there is no specific statutory or regulatory protocol for these instances, general informal guidance from DPI has suggested that removal would be appropriate provided districts have established protocols to attempt to locate students prior to such a removal. And basically, Joe tells me this is what we do already. So, uh, that is the first reading on that policy. Any questions, you can raise them now or at our policy meeting next Tuesday.
Okay, next one.
Uh, this one is simply a matter of wording. Uh, revision to policy five-five-four-zero, schools and governmental agencies. This policy has been clarified to consistently use the term law enforcement agency or law enforcement officers, as opposed to the current use of the term police. These modifications are recommended for clarity and consistency, as well as to address current questions arising as to the status of, for instance, immigration officials. As they are federal law enforcement officers, they are already addressed by policy language. Uh, so that, again, is a, a change of wording which has been given to us to, to, to follow. Okay? Policy five-seven-seven-one, search and Caesar, search and seizure. Uh, similarly, this is a change in wording. Uh, search and seizure policy has been updated to refer to the school resource officer rather than the police liaison officer, to be consistent with more current terminology. Uh, while the policy continues to allow other optional school staff to be designated to perform searches, districts are cautioned to be certain that any other individuals so designated are properly trained in the standards of reasonable suspicion for searches and related issues involving the constitutional rights of our students. But the only change here is, again, the terminology for the school resource officer.
Mrs. Brzink?
How do we train, um, our staff to deal with, uh, search and seizure? Because that's a touchy, that's a touchy situation.
Doctor Cut? Uh, the principals are the ones that are granted the authority. And they receive the training and the, uh, and the scope of that through their principal coursework. Um, as you're going to school to get your administrative license, you are taught the, what reasonable suspicion is. Your, the students are notified that, for instance, their locker, their backpack can be subject to search. So there's communication to the student, to the family, and principals are given their training and their coursework. This is something that, when locker searches come up, I'd say that this is, uh, something at the secondary level in particular that our principals are involved with on a weekly basis. They know what those parameters are.
Thank you.
Okay. That was five-seven-seven-one, and that's a revision. Policy fifty-eight thirty, student fundraising. The policy is revised to provide districts with some options regarding the permissive use of school district or school-specific logos and property of the district in furtherance of fundraising efforts. And the, the option here is quite simply to, to choose who was going to be su- and involved with doing that, and a superintendent has been selected in this district to have that responsibility. And, um, that also flows over into the next one, which is a policy on crowdfunding. Of terminology getting, I mean, technology getting involved with all this now. Crowdfunding, the new policy fi- uh, six, this is the new policy, six-six-zero-five. This policy is offered to address the growing usage of alternative forms of direct marketing fundraising efforts using web-based services such as social media and so on. And this is a new policy, but the, uh, policy that, the option, we're given the options. Again, we selected the superintendent as the option to approve this happening in any of our schools. That was.
Just a quick comment on that?
Yes, please.
Um, it was rather interesting, a year or two ago, we had a capital improvement project that a parent wanted to, um, you know, crowdfund for. Uh, it was for air conditioning for one of our schools. And, uh, you know, it'd be great if we could have all of our buildings paid for in that manner, but, uh, in capital improvement projects, but they just can't, there'd be no way to really manage that, and, and then who owns it, and so on and so forth. There's a lot of questions that come into play, so.
And by the way, that I forgot, I failed to mention this. There is an, uh, an addition to this policy, which says any crowdfunding used to obtain school classroom equipment shall become the property of the school district of Waukesha.
Yes, good point.
Not of the individual or the school.
Good point.
So, uh, that is included in there, by the way. Thank you for reminding me of that. Policy six-one-five-two, student fees, fines, and charges. Policies updated reflect collection authority pertaining to food service for compliance with the USDA regulations. Sentence has been added, "The district shall not permit or elicit the assistance of volunteers in efforts to collect unpaid student fees or expenses, including food service balances." So we do not use volun- volunteers to pursue that, uh, money. And number six-eight-zero-zero, quite simply, I'm not going to read that whole paragraph either. Quite simply, the board has, the resol- uh, the wording is, "The board has by resolution designated institutions to serve as depositories of all district funds, and maybe by resolution designate additional or different institutions." And again, we are already following this procedure. That is all of the, um.
First readings?
First readings for seven different policies. Any questions on these before we conclude?
Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, could you just provide clarity as to why, I mean, I'm the one about volunteers for collection, and is there a statutory reason for that, or just, just because we just don't?
Uh, it comes from the USDA, and when I did ask Richard Zimman, the Neola consultant, about it, there are privacy issues that are associated with that. Um, a lot of our offices, school offices, have parent volunteers that help out from time to time, and we wouldn't want to be turning over the names of individuals who have delinquent fees to a parent volunteer. Um, we want our staff to be involved with that first.
So it's a, it's a district desire to have that in our policy?
Uh, a district desire based off of the recommendation of the USDA and Neola policy service. Could potentially be a FERPA issue, depending on the, the family.
But generally, I would say that this is really a district desire.
It, it is, yeah.
It is, yes. It's a recommendation that we've accepted. So, and if you have no further questions on those tonight, that would conclude it. We have a policy committee meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, January sixteenth. And if you have any questions on those se- seven policies, please get them to us by that point. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Uh, moving on to technology, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to finance and facility, given by Mr. O'Brien.
We did have a meeting.
Take it, take it away.
Yeah, we did have a meeting. Uh, we did have one action item. It was the approval of the two thousand eighteen-nineteen health insurance plan design. Last December, the committee was asked to approve a new prescription benefit manager, and part of that discussion included laying out a plan to bid out our health insurance provider services during the calendar year twenty-seventeen for our September first, two thousand eighteen renewal. The administration has completed this evaluation. After gathering feedback from our employee insurance committee and several staff meetings, administration has recommended that UHC, United Healthcare, remain our network provider for fiscal year two thousand eighteen-nineteen. After given Anthem a strong consideration, and it was the second one that we looked at closely, it was determined that UHC's, uh, premium designation program would cause less disruption to our staff while generating similar potential savings. Uh, potential savings, uh, there was a projected nine percent increase, uh, by going to this premium designation program. We believe we can squeeze that down to a five percent increase in premiums. Four percent on healthcare is not a small amount of money.
It's a big dollar amount, yeah.
The committee approved the summary of UHC premium designation program as presented to begin on September first, two thousand eighteen, and I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. McCaffrey. Discussion? Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Barbara Brzink?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Kurt?
Uh, we had three information items. There was a net request software presentation. It was a very interesting presentation. Administration shared with the committee a demonstration of the net request software program the district is using to better manage our facilities and electronically preserve aging blueprints, which numbered into thousands of our facilities. And by the way, we had quite a bit of Mr. Clark's staff at our, uh, meeting the other night, yeah. This software uses original drawings and field verifications to develop a base layer of a facility. Once that is in place, layers can be built outlining items such as flooring type, HVA systems, HVAC systems, technology closets, cleaning areas, square footage measurements, emergency evacuation plans, roofing information, and it goes on and on. If you've ever seen a CAD program to designs equipment, you can do it in layers, and this is bringing us into the modern, modern age. The, this program allows district maintenance staff and architects and contractors to instantly review facility designs. The secondary schools are complete now, and the elementary schools are scheduled for completion in calendar year two thousand eighteen. So when we're looking at what our future maintenance needs will be, it'll be much easier once this is all in place. You know, it'd be easier to bid out, you know, to get quotes and, and lay things out. Second information item was a long-range budget forecast. The committee reviewed the current long-range budget projection, which currently shows a budget annual deficit of between three to four million dollars in fiscal year two thousand eighteen-nineteen and in subsequent years. The purpose of this projection is to enable the planning process to begin. All long-range projections are based on an agreed-upon set of assumptions. budget annual deficit of between $3 to $4 million in fiscal year 2018-19 and in subsequent years. The purpose of this projection is to enable the planning process to begin. All long-range projections are based on an agreed-upon set of assumptions. Several of these assumptions need to be refined over the next several months, so the projections will continue to be updated as more information becomes available. These projections are important to identify likely financial trends of the district and to provide a framework for the more detailed work that is being done in development of 2018-19 budget. When we talk about our taxing rate and how little we spend, it gives us not a lot of flexibility in adjusting for declining enrollment, and we have a serious declining enrollment problem that's been going on for a number of years. In addition...
Mrs. Brzing?
Yes. How different is this one from last year? More, less?
Well, let's, let's, let's...
It doesn't have to be an exact number.
I think, I think a better way is to talk about the long-term trend.
Okay.
We have, we have had a long-term trend through, some of it is because of Act 10, certainly a lot of it in terms of our compensation picture. Some of it is changing in the salary structure, which was agreed to prior to Act 10. Some of it is savings on the healthcare, which we started prior to Act 10. So we have been building up quite a, quite a reserve of, year to year, in and year out, almost every year, we've been able to generate a reserve. And I wish even two or three, or sometimes, well, $2 or $3 million positive generally year to year. That has been bucking our trend of decline enrollment, which means reduced revenues, and, but yet, we've been able to build up about a $35 million reserve fund. This is saying, unless we make adjustments, whether it's, and, and these are just projections, that we'll be dipping into that reserve fund. But it's cumulative, so we usually make adjustments year to year. And so we would expect this to be something that will guide our year-to-year adjustments. It also would, would guide, you know, how we communicate to the community going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, just to add on, we've done these projections the last, this will be our third January long-term, and we've seen this, this year coming where the revenue, expenditures will outpace the revenue. So we haven't had to take many actions. We have been talking about it, but administratively, we will begin, actually, next cabinet meeting, we'll really start digging into a plan of how do we, long-term, cover that. And it's a multi-year projection, which is good in a way, but the far end, the fourth and fifth year, keep in mind that's two annual budgets, it's several election cycles, it's... So really, we're looking at the next couple of years, and then obviously, we're working in greater detail on the 18-19 budget already, so...
So be clear, it's nothing to panic about. This is something we do every year, and, and it would be a panic if we didn't pay attention to it. I mean, that would be the panic. That would be the situation where some other school districts have branched in some serious problems trying to adjust after cumulative, cumulative years of deficits. And we've never done that. We've always adjusted every year, year to year, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, the good news is that this isn't July of 18, two months before the school year started, and everyone's under contract and all those things, so...
Yeah.
And let me see. Number four, the monthly budget report. The committee was presented a budget report for the month of December, and this time, we actually had the time to go over the budget report, so the meeting ran a little bit longer than some people wanted. $12,620,729 was reported in general fund revenue, and $8,957,359 was expended during this, during the month. $972,882 was reported in special education fund revenue, and $2,275,166 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection in other areas. And by the way, I believe our board has gotten spoiled by how short my FNF meetings have been in the last few years, so... With that, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Did that include the 45 minutes, the 25 of us who are waiting in the hall?
That didn't bother me at all.
You noticed.
Meet at the flagpole after the meeting. Moving on to our Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, given by Mrs. Brzing.
Thank you. Lots of exciting things are always going on in teaching and learning. We have no action items, but we have two information items and one discussion item that appear on the agenda for this evening. The first information item relates to PATH, P-A-T-H, and P-A-T-H stands for Providing Access to Healing. At its core, PATH is about removing barriers for students to access needed mental health support in the form of psychotherapy with a clinically licensed practitioner. PATH has been in a partnership with Wood Ear for approximately five years. Horning is on its second year, and Banting started this year. The United Way Grant has allowed us to expand services into South, Blair, and Hatfield. The next item is the Model Technology Classrooms. The Instructional Technology Coordinator Team is engaging in a one-on-one coaching with specific teachers to help support the vision of learning environments enhanced and transformed by technology. We are branding this as our Model Technology Classrooms. Waukesha One has been in place in our schools for three to five years now, depending on the wave of rollout for that school. Survey data indicates that we have witnessed significant growth and have many teachers using the technology meaningfully in their classrooms in some capacity. We continue to highlight these practices throughout the year at our Teaching and Learning Committee meetings. The discussion item is Student Achievement Update, Banting Elementary School. Through the tight focus using the sale process over the last four years, Banting has seen significant student achievement gains and growth gains. High-leverage teaching practices of thoughtful logs, math logs, language workshop, math discourse, and small group instruction have been implemented with a disciplined approach by all staff, and the results are a school significantly exceeding expectations on the state report card. This is the highest distinction a school can earn. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brzing. Is there any comments or discussion on the last item?
I would like to ask a question, please. Jody, is it possible for some of these Model Technology classrooms to be noted so that if any of us would like to visit, we would get a better idea of what it means?
Sure, I can give the board a list of those teachers.
Okay. That would be helpful. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brzing. Moving on to Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Ms. Madden.
President, our business was taken care of with the consent agenda, so I have no further thing for our committee.
Okay, thank you. That does end our committee reports. Moving on to other business, recommendations for future agendized items. Mr. O'Brien had an idea before?
I just think we need to refer to a topic like, I think Mr. Onicek brought up some good questions that we don't want to cover in depth at the full board meeting, and it should be referred to the proper committee. And I like the historical, but you're the board chairman, so I guess you get the right to decide where that goes.
We'll figure it out. Any other suggestions or ideas? Or agendized items? Okay, we don't, we do not have a need for executive sessions, so thank you for everyone